This is the October 2nd, 2019 meeting of the Planning Board of the Town of Smithtown. We're going to begin it as we usually do with the Pledge of Allegiance and you're all invited to join in.
......................................................
Good evening, Mr. Chairman and members of the Planning Board. The Planning Department would like to recommend that following items be recessed because the applicants are not ready to be heard at this time. Under zoning petitions, number one, 2012-04 Storybook Homes, Nissconset. Number two, 2012-02 Carlson Associates in Kings Park. Number three, 2010-06 KVC Holdings. And under waiver requests, four, number seven, seven-three Scholar States in Comac.
Is there anybody present who wishes to be heard at any of the just-read matters regarding which the Planning Department is recommending be recessed? Seeing none, a motion, please, on those matters.
I move that we recess items one through four as read.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So recessed.
The next item is a final subdivision for number 1180 Old Dock Road from, I think, two meetings ago. We contacted Vinnie to tell him that there really isn't any new information to act on this. So, and then we also have this letter from the Environmental Department basically explaining, it's from Howard Barton, dated October 1st, 2019, explaining what Trimarko and his applicant need to do.
Yeah, I don't think we need to read the whole letter. We can acknowledge it and make it part of the letter. But, like you said, it's a letter dated October 1st, 2019. Addressed to Mr. Vincent J. Trimarko, who is the attorney for the applicant regarding Old Dock Road Land Division of 1180, and it's sent by Howard Barton of our Department of Environment and Waterways. So hopefully, Mr. Trimarko has that letter and he and Mr. Barton can take care of whatever it is that they have to take care of. I would say maybe put this on for the first month of the first meeting in November. Or do you think it would be quick enough to do it in two weeks?
I don't think it's going to happen in two weeks. I mean, he has to go back before the Board of Health. They left the hearing open, so I don't know what their schedule is, so...
We'll just do the first meeting in November since he's not here to tell us what date he prefers. And then if that's not a good date, we'll...
Okay.
What's the date?
November 6th.
All right, so we're going to keep the hearing open at this point so that if there are additional comments from either town or county agencies or anybody else who wishes to make comments, they may do so at one of the upcoming recess dates of the hearing. And with that, we need a motion on this.
In the matter of number 1180 Old Dock Road Land Division, Kings Park, I move that we recess the public hearing to the November 6th, 2019 meeting of the Planning Board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None? So recessed, November 6th, 2019.
The next matter is a Tier Two telecommunications application, TC 2019-03. The reason for the report, the Planning Board will conduct a public hearing on October 2nd, 2019 to consider the above referenced application for a special exception for a personal wireless service facility pursuant to Chapters 242 and 322, 30.3b of the Smithtown Town Code. The applicant is New York SMSA Limited Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless Care of Amato Law Group, PLLC, 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901, Garden City, New York, 11530. The site is a rectangular shaped parcel developed with a one-story building, industrial, one-story industrial building and related park, parking located at 395 Moreland Road in Hopg. The building currently has no wireless facilities located on the roof. The site is zoned LI, industrial office building. To the north is zoned LI industrial office use. To the south is LI industrial office use. East is LI industrial office use. And west is LI industrial office use. Description of proposal, personal wireless service facility. The application is a proposed, is proposal to install a personal wireless service facility consisting of nine wireless telecommunications panel antennas and associated equipment mounted on the roof of an existing one-story industrial office building. A, other personal wireless service facility sites in the area are Monopole and Kennedy Drive in Hopg, a Suffolk County Water Authority water tower installation on Wick's Path in Comac, and a rooftop installation on Jericho Turnpike in Comac. B, the nearest three Verizon sites are located in Hopg with two rooftop installations on Adams Avenue and Vanderbilt Motor Parkway and a Monopole installation on Henry Street in Comac. One of the three locations is a multiple carrier site. The location, A, the proposed facility is not located in or near any identified avoidance areas such as flood hazard zones, wetlands, or parks. B, the proposed facility is located in an opportunity site because the proposed personal wireless service facility antennas and related equipment would be mounted on the roof of an existing one-story industrial office building. C, therefore, the proposed facility meets the location standards. The sighting, proposed facility meets the sighting standards because the antennas and related appurtenances would be mounted on the roof of the building, which is set back approximately 550 feet from Wireless Boulevard and approximately 113 feet from Moreland Road. Additionally, the proposed antennas will be concealed behind radio frequency transparent screening material to further reduce any visual impact. B, while the proposal does not appear to have adverse visual impacts on the surrounding area, additional screening of the proposed facility, including additional perimeter plantings along Wireless Boulevard or Moreland Road, may be required at the time of site plan review. Design, the antennas would be mounted on poles at the northeast, northwest, and southwest corners of the roof. The extensions of the antennas will be limited to six feet above the top edge of the roof to ensure the overall height of the proposal is kept to a minimum to reduce or eliminate any visual impact to the adjacent commercial properties. B, the proposed antennas are externally pole-mounted panel antennas. C, the antennas will be concealed behind RF screening material to further reduce any visual impact to the surrounding area. T, all related equipment would be installed on the roof of the building. E, therefore, the proposal meets the design standards. Further review of the design will be incorporated in the site plan approval process to ensure that materials, color, size, screening, landscaping, et cetera, will minimize the visual impact of the personal wireless service facility panels and related equipment. Alternative analysis, the application does not include proposed alternatives. Upon review, the proposal area planning has no alternatives to propose. Description of attachments, attached are scanned copies of a site plan and elevations of the proposed rooftop insulation submitted with the application as well as an arrow of the site. Recommended decision, findings of facts, one, the proposal meets the location standards in that it is an opportunity site. A, the proposal meets the sighting standards in that it is mounted on the roof of an existing structure and will be concealed behind RF screening material. Two, the proposal meets the design standards in that it would be mounted on the roof of an existing structure and will not extend more than six feet above the building's roofline. Three, the proposal meets the safety standards per Section 242.5d in that it meets the Town of Smithtown Building Code, which incorporates Section 3108.4 of the New York State Building Code for wind loads in accordance with TIA/EA22, and the facility is not roof-mounted.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. I'd like to make my appearance for the record, Simone Freeman of Amato Law Group, PLLC, 666 Old Country Road, Suite 901, Garden City, New York. I am appearing here on behalf of the applicant, New York SMSA, Doing Businesses Verizon Wireless. I just want to hand up the notice materials and also some reports. So I just want to note for the record that we did just hand up a copy of the Planning Department memorandum dated September 27th, 2019, an engineering report prepared by Daniel R. Fallasco, PE PC, dated September 20th, 2019, together with a structural certification prepared by Structural Consulting Services PC dated February 6th, 2019, a planning, zoning, and visual impact analysis prepared by VHB Engineering Surveying and Landscape Architecture PC dated September 20th, 2019, a real estate consulting report prepared by Lynch Appraisals dated September 17th, 2019. I'd also like to note that in the record, we had previously filed with the board on October 20, not October, on August 23rd, 2019, a antenna site FCC compliance assessment and report prepared by Pinnacle Telecom Group dated April 10th, 2019, and also a RF report prepared by C Squared Systems LLC dated July 30th, 2019.
Did you file that with the board or with the department?
With the Planning Department, I'm sorry. So as I mentioned, I am here appearing on behalf of Verizon Wireless in connection with the property located at 395 Moreland Road, Hopg, New York. Verizon Wireless is a public utility under the laws of the State of New York and holds and maintains six licenses from the FCC to maintain its network. Verizon Wireless is respectfully requesting a Tier Two special exception permit pursuant to Section 322-30-30.3 Subsection B of the Town of Smithtown Code for its proposed small cell facility to be located at the property. As indicated in the RF report, there is, there are serious service deficiencies in Verizon Wireless's coverage and capacity in this area. As such, the small cell facility is necessary in order to provide coverage and capacity to address the existing service deficiencies within the vicinity of the property. Once the small cell facility has been constructed and activated, the existing deficiencies will be eliminated. So as noted, the property is situated within the Hopg Industrial Park. It's developed with commercial uses and is zoned light industrial. It's located on the east side of Moreland Road and is at the northeast corner of Moreland Road and Wireless Boulevard. Verizon Wireless proposes to install a small cell facility, which will consist, among other things, of screening enclosures designed to match the building and look as though they are extensions of the building. There will be nine panel antennas mounted within the screening enclosures in three sectors, an alpha, beta, and gamma sector. Also proposed are two GPS antennas, which will be mounted to a safety guard railing, and nine RH units as well as additional accessory equipment. As indicated in the Planning Department memo dated September 27th, 2019, the proposed facility complies with the town's location, sighting, design, and safety standards set forth in the wireless ordinance. The property is an opportunity site as the small cell facility will be located on the rooftop of an existing building located within a light industrial area. It will be concealed within the screening enclosures and appear as extensions to the building. In addition, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 Subsection B, the proposed small cell facility complies with the sighting standards as it will be mounted to the rooftop of the existing structure, and it will not project more than six feet above the existing building's parapet. As such, it should reduce and eliminate any visual impact to adjacent properties. Moreover, pursuant to Town Code Section 242-5 Subsection C, the proposed small cell facility complies with the town's design standards as the antennas and associated appurtenances will be mounted behind the screening enclosures and therefore they will be completely concealed. As previously noted, the screening enclosures will be painted to match the facade of the building and appear as extensions of the building thereby reducing visual impacts. Additionally, as indicated in the planning report and the one-mile visibility study, the screening enclosures will have a top height that is below existing HVAC equipment on the, currently on the building. Further is illustrated in the photo simulations prepared by APT Engineering, the screening enclosure would be set back from the abutting roadways, therefore reducing any visual impacts from both roads, Moreland Road and also Wireless Boulevard. Moreover, the GPS units, the guard rails, utility boxes and additional equipment will be either located within the screening enclosures or partially concealed by the existing parapet walls, therefore also reducing any visual impact to the surrounding area. The small cell facility is also the minimum height required in order to remedy the existing deficiencies in service and is the least intrusive means to do so. Finally, the small cell facility will be fully complying with all applicable New York State Building and Fire Codes as well as the Town of Smithtown Code and applicable FAA and FCC requirements. As the maximum RF exposure is 9.728, I'm sorry, 9.7821 percent of the FCC maximum permissible exposure limit, which is more than nine times below what the permissible limit is. Now, I have a number of consultants with me here tonight which have, which can speak more about the reports that they already prepared if the board has questions or would like to hear from them. I'll leave it up to you if you'd like me to bring them all up for a short summary. We can do that. I'm not sure if you have questions.
It's actually up to you which people you want to present or don't want to present. Unless anybody has a specific person here on the board that they know they want to see or hear, it's really up to you who you put on.
Sure. I will briefly bring up just a couple of people to just summarize. So first, I'll bring up Dan Fallasco, who's a licensed engineer and can explain, among other things, the sighting for the facility.
Before we get to him, I just want to note for the record that I've been advised that the affidavit of posting is in order so that the notice requirements have been complied with. Also, there was a series of documents that counsel mentioned that she handed up to Mr. Colado. I see all of the board members have their own copy of that set of documents. We're going to deem those documents also part of the record and ask that Mr. Colado, who also has his own copy, that his copy become the official copy that may, to me, make part of the record. And that's it.
I'll also send one to the Environmental Department as well.
Good idea. Good evening, Daniel Fallasco, with offices at 94 Steuben Boulevard, Nissconset, New York. Here on behalf of Verizon Wireless, Mr. Colado and Ms. Freeman have already explained the site in detail. The only thing I could add is that all of the utilities that are required are already on the site. There'll be no need to bring in new utilities. The parking around the site is sufficient for any activity that we may need. By that, I mean the, the site is accessed maybe once every six weeks or so by a technician who comes to do diagnostic testing on the equipment, and they usually arrive in a passenger car so they could park on site, so that's not an issue. The only thing I'd like to just make one little slight correction, I think Ms. Freeman said it was on the northeast corner of Wireless at Moreland, it's on the southeast corner of Wireless in Moreland. Other than that, I have nothing else to add because all of the stuff has already been said. If there's any specific questions, I'm here.
Any questions? No questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next, I'd just like to bring up John Ellsworth of VHB in order to discuss the planning and the aesthetic impacts of the communication facility.
Good evening, John Ellsworth, VHB, with the office at 100 Motor Parkway in Hopg, in the industrial park. I'll just stick to a couple of the items in the planning report. We did a full analysis of the code requirements. I'll let that stand for itself. I'll focus on the visual impact analysis that we did. APT did a photo simulation. They took photographs of the existing conditions and then used a computer model to superimpose the proposed facility on the photographs. They took photographs from eight locations around the site, and I'm going to show you the simulations from two of those locations. Both of these simulations are from a distance of about a tenth of a mile away from the facility. The top photo is the existing condition and the bottom photo is the simulation. This is from the north, looking at the, the building.
And here and here...
You can see the, the enclosures on two of the three corners of the building that it will go. That was, that was from Wireless. This is from Moreland, from the southwest, and this is, again, about a tenth of a mile away. This is the existing condition here, and again, you can see two of the corners, the enclosures at the, the corners.
The bottom is a simulation.
Yeah, the bottom is a simulation. This is a photo, an actual photograph, and the superimposed is based on the model. And the only other thing that I would want to mention for the record is that the proposed facility, the property it's on, the distance to the nearest residential property to the west is 1,600 feet, and the distance between the facility and the house on that property is approximately 760 feet. Thank you.
So noted, thank you. Anybody have any questions of him? No? Okay.
Okay. Next, I'd like to bring up Martin Laven of C Squared Systems to briefly discuss the service deficiencies in the area.
Martin Laven, C Squared Systems, RF consultant to Verizon. Please give your business address for the record. Yes, 65 Dartmouth Drive, Auburn, New Hampshire.
Welcome to Smithtown.
Thank you. Been here before. He has to, interesting ride on the ferry today. Essentially, we have, this is a, mostly a capacity site. It does enhance coverage in this area to some extent, but mostly it is intended to offload the capacity exhaustion on, I think, to South Comac to the west and Upsky Hotel to the southeast. Both of those sites have reached their capacity limit, and this site is there to get the customers, some customers off of both of those sites in order to relieve that capacity exhaustion. It also improves coverage levels to some extent on Wireless and Moreland Road. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody have any questions of him? No? Okay.
Okay. And next, I'd like to call Dave Collins of Pinnacle Telecom Group, which will, who will testify as to the health and safety aspects of the communication facility.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Dave Collins, Pinnacle Telecom Group, from Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
Can you just give the street address, please?
14 Ridgedale Avenue, Cedar Knolls, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay. The Federal Commission, Federal Communications Commission sets a maximum permissible exposure limit for radio energy in terms of exposure to humans. The standard itself is very conservative, and the way to determine the level is through a mathematical formula, which was approved by the FCC. This, the formula itself is also very conservative by, and by saying so, I mean the resultant calculations are intentionally skewed to be even higher than they would be once this proposed site was approved or be up and running. So we perform the calculations for the, based on, for the antennas, based on the information that was given to us by Verizon, and, and we describe the result in terms of a percent, with 100% being the maximum permitted level. Anything under that, you would comply with the rules and regulations. So in this case, the maximum level as a result of the proposed site being on air, 9.7281 percent, that's more than 10 times below, we would be in compliance by a very wide margin. Questions?
Any questions? No? All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I'd just like to note for the record that according to the Telecommunications Act of 1996, since the FCC has promulgated a standard with respect to radio frequency admissions and the site is well below the such standard, then this board or any other board is preempted from considering RF permissions with respect to any zoning application. Finally, I would like to bring up Mike Lynch of Lynch Appraisals, who will address any impacts on real estate values in the area.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. This is Michael Lynch, 15 Dewey Street, Huntington, New York. I prepared the real estate consulting report as to any adverse impacts to nearby property values. I looked at the property last week. I took some photos of the property. As you know, the building's at the southeast corner of Wireless Boulevard and Moreland Road. It's improved with a one and two-story industrial building on approximately 8.3 acres. It's surrounded on all sides by industrially zoned and utilized properties. The nearest single-family residence, as noted by the planner, is approximately one-third of a mile away to the west on Tulip, Tulipwood Drive. Again, it's, it's smack dab in the middle of the Hopg Industrial Park. There's no impact to nearby residences, given the distance and, again, the surrounding nature, industrial nature of, of the area, and the antennas themselves, as noted, will be fully concealed within screening structures that'll appear to be an extension of, of the building. So I don't see any adverse impact to nearby property values. I can answer any questions that the board may have any.
See, done? Thank you. Yes, thank you.
Thank you. Okay. So at this time, which I'm not sure, I don't, you don't have, do you, we're still waiting on the report from...
Yeah, we don't, we don't have a recommendation or a proposed resolution on this application because as, I'm sure you're aware from prior applications, our procedure here in Smithtown is to wait until we get the comments and input from our Department of Environment and Waterways, and it's their policy or procedure to wait until after the initial public hearing so they can incorporate any relevant comments into their recommendation.
Yes.
So we're going to have to come back one more time to vote on it the next time after we get DEW's input.
Yes. So for now, I would request that we, well, I guess you could close the record to the extent that you still need to obtain their report and, I guess, adjourn it until whatever date.
Well, I'll ask Mr. Colado if we have a target date in a second, but we're going to keep the hearing open.
Okay.
We're not going to close the hearing because we're going to keep the hearing open to receive their comments, and also the next time on, other people may want to speak. You may want to present another person or more information from these gentlemen. So, you know, we're going to keep the hearing open. We're going to, we're going to recess it to a date certain so that you don't have to repost it. You think that, that the November 6th meeting would be enough time for DEW? Or you want to go to the 20th?
No, I, I would do October 16th.
Or even sooner? Okay. I'm sure you want that, it's like even better.
Yes, I'm sorry, October 16th, you're saying?
Two weeks.
Okay.
Does that work? I, I mean, I don't see why two, two weeks should be enough. I don't see why...
Okay. Well, if, if some, for some reason we don't have it, we just communicate with counsel so they don't come here for nothing.
Yes.
Anybody in the audience who hasn't spoken already who wishes to be heard on this matter? Any additional, any questions, many member of the board, of counsel, or any of the experts who testified?
I just got one quick question.
Yes.
This is, I understand it's smack in the middle of the industrial park, but this is on a one-story or two-story building?
It's a, it's one to two stories. The portion, it's basically of the lower roof and then the higher roof of the building.
Okay. And the only reason why I bring that up is the surrounding buildings looks like they're all two-story as well?
They're a mix. I think most of them are two-story. I think that John probably would be... would be able to answer that question a little bit better.
I think they're all two, one-story.
Are they around? Okay, sorry.
And this is only partially a two-story.
And what if, just, uh, what if the surrounding buildings went higher? Say, they were all went to three or four-story, would it make a difference on the antenna?
Uh, sir, if you can just answer his question, please come up to the record, whoever's, go up to the microphone.
No, I think it's John, for you. Oh, I'm sorry, could you just clarify, where you-
If the antenna was set lower than the surrounding buildings, would it make a difference on the signal?
Oh, yeah, sorry, Martin.
Um, I, I don't think-
Pick your name.
Martin, Martin Laven, uh, C Squared Systems, uh, 65 Dartmouth Drive, Auburn, New Hampshire. Given the spacing here, I don't anticipate it would be a problem. If the other buildings were much closer in a much denser arrangement, then having everyone triple their height would be something we'd have to certainly look at. We'd have run an analysis specifically, but I don't think there'd be much impact, given how wide apart the buildings are.
Yeah, I mean, I see it's, it's, I mean, it's not a, a city atmosphere, we can have building atop a building, but there is a large span between it, but I do know there was talks in the industrial area to go higher, so I wouldn't know if you had-
If the streets were narrower and the buildings were right next to each other, and everyone suddenly became twice as tall as us, that would definitely be a concern, but in this case, there's enough empty space between them that I don't think it's a concern.
Okay.
Thank you. Any other questions? I think none. Uh, we're gonna keep the hearing open. Uh, we're going to recess this matter to the October 16th meeting of the board, which will be our next meeting, two weeks from tonight, and with that, we need a motion on this matter, please.
In a matter of special exception petition, TC 2019-03, New York S M S A Limited Partnership, doing business as Verizon Wireless, a move that re-recessed the public hearing to the October 16th meeting of the planning board.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? So recessed to October 16th, 2019. Thank you very much.
Thank you, good night.
Thank you, thank you all. Alright, so, uh, I see we have no other matters on tonight, so since that is the case, uh, we will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? None? We're adjourned.